Call the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. Would you stand with me, please? I'll lead the prayer. And Pettis, would you lead the pledge? By women, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and the blessings and the opportunities again to serve our fellow man and this time of the year and the thankful attitude that each and every one of us should have this time of year. Let it, we pray that again it permeate all through the year and we continue to have that attitude. We pray that you'll just be with us tonight in this meeting. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Paul Roll, please, ma'am.
Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
President.
We have a quorum.
Codes Department report, David.
Codes Department's report is on the table, Mr. Chairman, about the building permits that was issued.
Thank you. Time to look at those. If there's any questions, you can ask David after the meeting. Rezoning requests or anything withdrawn or deferred.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, we had sent out a, at least we had a revised agenda. The agenda you have out before you tonight is current. There were originally two zoning applications on the agenda. One is the Mr. Baker. The other one was for an application along Baker Road. That Baker Road application has been withdrawn. Also, there was a site plan for the Dollar General up in Last Cassis that was also going to be added on to the agenda, but that's also been withdrawn from the agenda today.
Thank you, sir. Rezoning requests. We're going to have a public hearing on this in a minute, but Donald Baker rezoning and conditional use permit.
Thank you, Chairman Lynch. The first application we have this evening is for Donald Baker. The property is located at 813 Rock Springs Midland Road and is approximately six acres in size. The request is to go from R-15 to services with a conditional use permit for a trucking business and a residential house. The applicant has been using the property for truck parking and maintenance for about four years. Information provided by the applicant indicates that he owns four tractor trailers that are parked on the property during the weekends. We have received some information from neighbors that indicates there may be a few more tractor trailers from time to time, and maintenance work is performed inside this metal barn on the property. Now, the metal barn on the site was likely built in 1999. There are no permits for it, which implies that it was an agricultural structure when it was built. The property also has a mobile home, which is used as a residence for a family member. The applicant has indicated that he does not wish to pave the parking area, which if this was approved, that would still require a variance from the board zoning appeals for gravel parking. This application is in response to a violation letter that was sent by our Codes Department based on complaints received about the property. The Rutherford County Conference of Plan recommends this location be included within the suburban character area. The proposed use is not consistent with the land use policies for that area. The request would create an isolated island of commercial, which the Conference of Plan recommends against. An additional concern that staff does have with this application is under the new proposed zoning regulations, which we are in the process of working on right now, the most restrictive zone that would allow this type of use is light industrial, which of course in our new regulations would allow a host of other types of commercial and industrial uses as well. So just give you a quick view of the surrounding property. Bear with us, the connection to the computer is a little slow, so it might take a bit today. This is the driveway on the property. It's relatively large in order to handle the tractor, tractor trailers. Rock Springs Midland Road. Across the street there is the Lewis Downs subdivision. And there's a fairly good screen on the front of the road, so I went onto the property to get some better pictures of it. You can see there's the mobile home, the parking area, and the building. This was taken during the week, so there aren't any tractor trailers parked on the property at this time because they're usually only there on the weekends, but there is that one, the one white vehicle. And our offices received several phone calls in opposition. You'll also find in front of you on your table a letter written to us in opposition. There's also a petition against the application that's on your table. And we received a letter from Commissioner Phillips, who is the commissioner of this area, who has listed her concerns and has recommended against this application as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners?
Elizabeth, I was writing when you were talking about the suburban care area. Is that what we define that as?
What?
That particular location on our new zoning map proposal is what classification?
It's part of the suburban character area.
Character, okay.
Which is the area basically where many residential zoning, about three units per acre.
Okay, so this would not necessarily meet the guidelines.
No, it would not meet the guidelines.
Okay.
I was going to ask Mr. Jones what all the violations that y'all saw when you went out and y'all had a call into your office, I assume, is what, what had happened there?
That's correct. Early in September, we received a claim of a trucking business or terminal type operation going on at this address. Officers made contact with Mr. Baker and that had a letter to Mr. Baker about the conditions that he would need to meet. Trucking dispatch company or maintenance from that area.
So basically, the violation is then operating a business without the proper zoning and everything. So is it, it's not just a owner occupant type run truck, then they're actually running numerous trucks out of this location? I mean, how many is?
That's the way I understand it, running numerous trucks and might be coming for pick-up rigs and leave their.
You know, how long they've been doing it or how long they've been living there?
I don't write off, no.
Okay. Maybe the applicant can tell us that when he comes up.
Yes, sir, Vincent. Elizabeth, you said there were several calls in opposition. Do we document those calls?
Yes, we try to keep a record them and keep them in the file for your information when we receive them.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. This was agricultural business, like a barn or something like that?
Well, I did some research on the property. The tax records show the building as of 1999, but then when I called our Codes Department, they have no record of a permit being issued, which would indicate that it was an agricultural structure, which of course we do not issue building permits for. So the previous owner of the property, Build-A-Barn, is my best guess. The applicant is the one that added the large gravel area to the property.
Okay, Rhonda.
If we recommend against this application, what portion of his business can he do and be in compliance with the zoning?
On this property, none.
He'll have to be told to completely relocate his business?
Yes.
This can't qualify as a home-based business. One, because of just the intensity of it, but even if he could reduce the intensity, he doesn't live on the property. So you can't really call it a home-based business when he doesn't live there.
That was my question. I thought I heard during the presentation that the applicant themselves do not live on the property, a family member does. So that would not, that would exclude them from being a home-based business.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Another question before we open it up to a public hearing. We will open it up to a public hearing. Everyone that's for or against to be able to speak, we try to hold your comments to around three minutes so you'll be considerate, you fellow man. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Right here. Yes, sir, right there. Give your name and.
My name is Donald Baker. I've lived out there in that area for 17 years. I had trucks. When I got this notice, it's a business. Well, you know, trucks has been a livelihood to me. Three and a half years ago, I was using my home base and it got dangerous to back in off the roads to there. This, three and a half years ago, this property come available. Went there to the auction that day. I asked them, did they have any restrictions on it? They said, no. Property, moved in there, been there three and a half years now. I didn't know that I caused anybody problems. If I did, I'm sorry. All I ask is, you know, I'd like to stay there for, I'm 75. How long is it? Do I need it? I don't know. But over this period of time, I would like to stay there. I would like to, if you can't do nothing else, you know, be an old age thing on it or whatever. I don't know really what else. First time I've ever been put in a position to do this or do what I'm supposed to do, but I would like to stay there. And they talking about, somebody said here, do I live there? Well, if it gets down to that point, I can live there, you know. I can move in there because I don't have nobody, nobody's in the trailer no more. I'm fixing it up. And if that's what it takes, then I can live there. So I appreciate, you know, whatever anybody can do, what.
Thanks, sir. Does anyone have, just a minute, sir. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Baker?
You said before, three and a half years ago, do you live, where do you live? Do you live on Rock Springs Road or?
I live at 648, 400 yards from the property that I'm at.
Back toward 231?
Yes, yes.
And how many trucks were you running out of there? Have you got a shop at your house?
Yes, I did. It got so, you know, over the years, traffic got bad. The only way I could get in my property was back off of the road and back into the property. Well, that got dangerous. I didn't want to cause accidents. Been to this other place three, three and a half years. I've been fortunate, have no accident. They say the road is not, I seen an article in a letter that I got that the road was brought up and it ain't qualified to bring trucks in. Well, I don't know how they got 500 homes back through there. The water hydrant, it was brought up that, you know, I didn't have a water hydrant at this place. I'm not complaining because I don't have one in my home, you know. Whereas, is Lewis Downs, I was there before Lewis Downs, and I'm not complaining. If Lewis Downs was a problem, if I was a problem, Lewis Downs wouldn't expand it like it has. And like I say again, if I was a problem, then they, people moved into the problem. I don't know is what I caused the problem, what the problem was.
Okay. Anyone have a question?
How many trucks do you have on this property?
I have four. Four, very seldom ever four at one time.
What exactly do you do?
Ma'am, they're only on there on a weekend to start with. They come in on Friday night, Saturday. They leave on Sunday, Sunday night. And as far as a business, I really don't run a business out of there. The business that the trucks run from is over here at Reddysville.
What exactly do you do with these trucks?
They haul, they haul steel.
So you just park them there, is that correct?
Just park them. I have no, no, it's no business that is concerned with it because I, you know, I don't do no business for nobody. I don't unload nothing. I don't load nothing there. It's just a park, a maintenance, a parking area is all I can.
Yes, sir, Steve.
I was wanting to ask then, on that part, the barn that's being used out there, then you're pulling semis into there and doing, changing oil, maintenance?
I, we drain it, put all the oil in 55 gallon drums. I have a company comes in there, pulls the oil out. It ain't scattered. I don't have it on the ground. The only place that you can find it, I guess where it'd be something dead is where my daughter let the dog pee on the shrubbery and that's, you know, I ain't, I didn't go there to be destructive or.
Well.
I asked for maybe, you know, if a grandfather writes, Vince have been there that long.
I understand.
I can understand these other people's problems too, you know.
You say you have four trucks at the maximum there. So are these relatives of yours then that are driving these trucks? Or are you hiring these people out to drive the trucks? Are they your?
I has been in this together and I have three more drivers that drive them.
So you own the trucks?
And I own the trucks, own the trailers, own the property. Like I say, it's, I figure maybe I benefit, maybe I don't, you know. The state, I have maybe $35,000, $38,000 worth of fuel a month. Well, they, you know, the state gets out of that, the tars, the oil, you know, if they don't want that, I, what I do, I don't know where I would go at the time. Right now, I've looked. I mean, this young lady here, she told me a while back that I need to do something. I don't know where I'd go. I don't, I mean, I'm at y'all's mercy, whatever it is.
I understand. And we're, you know, we have the luxury of this wonderful job. I'll tell you what, it's things like this where you're working hard, times are tough and, but the problem, there's a line there of residential and commercial. And this is definitely a commercial business in a residential area with existing homes and ones that's built over there. I mean, it's strictly out of the zone. And that's what makes it the tough part right there.
Sir, I would venture to say that I'm not the only commercial one in that area.
Probably not. Probably not. You was there three and a half years before you got caught, so to speak.
Well, for this to come up, you know, that's what I can't understand, why it was so long.
Right, right.
Like I say, I'm country. I don't, I guess I don't.
Well, I don't think you're trying to circumvent it, but I just think you're in a, you're in a tight situation, but that's the line. You're in a residential area and residential areas, we, you know, you try to protect the commercial end from the residential end because this is what we work for. We work to go home and be in a peaceful environment, which I'm not saying you're not peaceful, but if you're trying to get in or get out or starting trucks up and seeing if they're running right or whatever, that might be bothering folks. So that's, that's the problem, but.
When I went out there, you know, I thought I was in the country, you know. I didn't realize that it brings all this commotion. Anything else, sir? Anybody?
I don't know. I'm just gonna, we probably don't need to start deliberating at this point in time, but if you were still driving out of your house and had been for 15 or 20 years, then you'd be in a different situation, in my opinion, than when you moved three and a half years ago. Because you aren't grandfathered on this spot. You've only been there three and a half years. If you'd been driving, if you were still at your house, had been driving there for, since 1975 or something, then in my opinion, you probably would be grandfather. But, but this is, but when you moved, you changed all that. So, so I don't know. I don't, like I said, I don't want to start deliberating at this point in time, but.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. But does anyone else wish to speak? For or against? Just come forward, please. Give us your name. That's okay. That's okay.
I'm Janet Sidens. I live on 597 Rock Springs Midland Road. We've been there 12 years. We live on 32 acres. The end of that road is 32 acres, 80 acres, 12 acres, 15 acres, what have you. We have cattle. We have horses. We run farms out there. We've all been out there together. A friend of ours actually sold the property for the subdivision. We bought it living in the country so we could have our cattle and our horses. And one thing that has concerned me, I have not noticed, and we're retired, I've not noticed the tractor trailers coming and going. And I also know that from Rock Springs Road, that you can only see the top of that metal building. And I know that we have a bus business and a couple other businesses on that road, but I don't hear any loudness or anything because like I said, we've been there for 12 years and we sit on our porch and we work in our yard. What concerns me more than Mr. Baker's trucks are the trash in my ditches, tailgating, flashing lights, speeding, passing on a double yellow line, motorcycles, no one seems to do the speed limit. There's fireworks coming from the subdivision around the corner. There are handguns, rifles, semi-automatics and shotguns. And there are parties frequently till midnight and usually after midnight. And I'm sitting on 32 acres and hear it and can even hear the conversation that goes with it. Traffic runs from the subdivision. They added a road, used to go down and go in. They've added a road. That traffic is in and out, in and out, all day long. And I can sit on my porch and watch a green, blue, yellow car go out, go in, go out and go in. At least I'm like, do they not work? Why are they, you know, how come they're making so many trips all day long? Like I said, the farms. And I'm very aware of some home-based businesses, buses, guttering, maintenance and insurance businesses in our area, and that does not bother any of us. And I know there's traffic for that. And also, since we've been there and the subdivision was in, we have had a major wreck through our fence, through about 20 acres of our front lot, and a young man was statflied Vanderbilt because of that incident. And we also have the Sheriff's Department who frequently, and I wish I had documented this, but the Sheriff's Department frequently, at least every other week, maybe skip three weeks or four, but every month, we have a Sheriff's Department run out our road and it has passed every one of the farms. And they either go around the corner or they turn into the subdivision frequently. And the young lady who was killed, I believe, last year, she was also coming from either that subdivision or those homes around the corner who are complaining. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, you're next.
I live, my wife and children, I live next door. So Richard Smith. My wife's Melinda Smith. So we probably have as much information as anyone about this. We've been there. Mr. Baker's been there about four years. We have a fairly amicable relationship, wouldn't you say, Mr. Baker? Okay. But of course, we're going to show some things that maybe might tell a little bit different story here. There's another one. This started out initially as, like I said, we've been there since 98. Mr. Baker bought the property at auction. Mr. Hazard, the former owner, fell on hard times. His wife died of cancer, so it was auctioned off. And he said, well, I've got a son who's going to tinker on a truck, on a truck. And I thought, well, okay, well, that's fine. And we agreed to respect each other's privacy. Well, if you could show maybe the topographical shot again? I think it kind of behooves to let you know exactly where we are in relation to the property. Baker did mention, he, they operate impact wrenches, working on these trucks two and three days a week. It started out initially just every Saturday, then it's going on Sunday. Now, there's other days of the week when they're out there, especially during the summer. I have a degree in audio engineering, recording industry management, so I have a decibel meter. This is going off at 100 decibels for five hours. Sound would be good. I mean, it would say it all, but it's, suffice it to say, it's 100 decibels. I have some paperwork with me from OSHA that will tell you 95 decibels is the equivalent of a train whistle at 200 feet. We're 100 feet from this. OSHA also regulates 95 decibels to a limit of two hours per day. This is going on from eight or nine in the morning until about five in the afternoon, every single Saturday of our lives, every Saturday. My daughter had a birthday party. She's 11 years old. She's with us today. There's Taylor. She had a birthday party, had her friends over, was all excited about the pool. We had to listen to that level of noise the whole entire time. They had to try and drown it out with their records. This is just an ongoing thing. It started out probably innocently enough with Mr. Baker. He thought he'd just move in and do something small, but it's grown to the point to where it's a major operation. These trucks are in and out of there now at all times of the night. They typically come in Thursday nights and Friday nights between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM. Waking us, it rumbles, if you look at the. Or if you could go back to that last. No, your topographical shot there.
I'm so sorry.
Whoever had the pointer. Look on the easternmost side there, right there. From there to the driveway is about. Imagine living there and hearing this hour upon hour upon hour. And your children are sleeping in those bedrooms, getting ready for school. It's not the proper place. This is owned, R-15 residential. It's in violation of the Planning Commission. I believe it's paragraphs 1B and 5B, where they want to keep the residential and the commercial separate. It's the logical thing to do. And this has become a big-time trucking operation here. Now, if I could, I'll just read a few statements I wrote down here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
No questions at all? Okay. You couldn't get the sound to work at all? Okay. Well, Elizabeth heard him. As I mentioned, we've lived there since June of 98, and we've enjoyed the beautiful rural setting, especially because of the peaceful quietness as it's removed from the normal distractions and noises seven miles up the road in Murfreesboro. Although I love Murfreesboro, I'm an MTSU alumni, I love the quiet peacefulness out in Christiana, as does our family. Mr. Baker bought the property adjacent to ours about four years ago and casually mentioned he didn't really have any big plans, but his son may occasionally tinker around on a truck in the metal building on the property. He assured us he'd be respectful of our family's privacy, so we didn't think any more of it, and hoped we'd gain a good neighbor. Well, very quickly, a truck turned into two full tractor-trailer rigs. Two semis turned into four. And now four have turned into six noisy rigs running in and out of this gravel driveway full-time within about 70 feet of our children's bedrooms. Needless to say, a full-scale diesel truck depot running close to a family home is consistently disruptive of our day-to-day family living. Baker's semis normally return from their runs between 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM, waking all of us, and frankly, it's robbed us of our sanctity. Now, I say this. Now, I say this because not only is every weekend filled with the loud compressors, diesel fuel, and the noise of the idling trucks, the foul language he and his drivers habitually use would not be tolerated in this room tonight by any of you. It would curl your hair. It wouldn't be tolerated in any public business. And it's unacceptable for my children to constantly be exposed to it. Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks, and I hope that says it all. I asked Mr. Baker on a couple of occasions to speak to his drivers about the problem. I told him again about it this past Sunday when he came over to me. And then ten minutes later, I'll hear the same thing. I'll hear him using the language over there. Now, I grew up with a drill sergeant. I don't have virgin ears. But I heard enough of it to know I don't want my children to be constantly exposed to it. Our children have come inside from playing on more than one occasion telling me they knew they weren't supposed to be exposed to that kind of language. How pathetic. We bought six acres of land with our home for our children and family to enjoy, landscaped it beautifully, and yet we have this nuisance operating outside of the zoning laws right in our own backyard. As for the noise, how would you like your backyard about a hundred feet from the swimming pool with a hundred-decibel impact wrenches running five, six, eight, ten hours into, from morning till dark? I like Mr. Baker okay in, in some respects, but he's being very coy with you. And we have the video. Whenever Elizabeth can get the sound to work, you can hear it for yourselves.
We're gonna be able to hear it tonight? Won't be able to get that?
Yeah. Neighbors, neighbors a half a mile away at the back of the Lewis Downs subdivision. I walked the whole subdivision and talked to the folks because apparently maybe three letters went out. So, if someone during their busy schedule didn't see the sign at his driveway, they wouldn't know this meeting was taking place tonight. But everyone to a man, and I've got sixty signatures here.
Are they different from these?
I've added some. I added twenty this past weekend. Several of those folks are here tonight. Some of them make remarks. Everyone to a man and woman are opposed to this for a lot of different reasons. I'd like to be clear as to why we're here tonight. We're not here because the theme park wants to bring hundreds of jobs and multitudes of revenue to the Christiana community on Rock Springs Road. No, we're here for one reason. Donald Baker got caught cheating by the codes department. Now that codes enforcement has ordered him to vacate, he wants to avoid doing the correct, logical thing and instead shift the burden of responsibility to the backs and the checkbooks of the hundreds of homeowners in our community. His proposed rezoning at eight thirteen Rock Springs Midland Road provides absolutely no benefit to us as parents raising families, homeowners, or as taxpayers. This is the wrong proposal in the wrong place and at the wrong time. The Planning Commission has already arrived at that decision. They stated in their staff report. As the commission is aware, this is an entirely R-15-zoned residential area. The county's comprehensive plan recommends the proposed location be located within the suburban character area, area suitable for residential development only. Baker's proposal contradicts the planned stated objectives, one B and five B, to keep separate commercial and residential development. There's plenty of land zoned commercial from which Mr. Baker may operate his trucking depot just three-quarters of a mile away up Rock Springs Midland Road on Highway two thirty-one. He has sixty-five acres behind his home. In light of these facts, his is a throw-the-baby-out-with-the-bathwater proposal. This is absolutely unequivocally the wrong place to allow a trucking depot with currently six full tractor-trailer rigs coming and going in and out of our subdivisions and homes at all times of the day and night, especially from a safety vantage point. Mr. Baker's property is located on an old two-lane country collector road with no shoulders, sidewalks, lighting, or adequate right-of-way. His driveway down which these semis travel to turn onto Rock Springs is located about twenty-five feet directly across the street and in between the two access roads to Lewis Downs subdivision, which currently contains about sixty homes. I've spoken with the developer. He already has plans for ninety. Within two years, there are to be two hundred and forty homes in Lewis Downs subdivision. That's Mr. Baker's driveway on the right. That's a blind hill, straight back, over which people are traveling, you know, twenty, thirty percent above the speed limit. It's a matter of time before a truck's coming out of there, mom's coming home with kids in tow. And we've got a major problem here. Directly across the street is Lewis Downs subdivision. You're now gonna have, within two years, committee members, you're gonna have two hundred and forty homes in that subdivision. He's splitting both access points. The other access point is back west this way, about a hundred yards. So, he's splitting those. Our driveway is just this side of his. This means, of course, the traffic from Lewis Downs subdivision alone will quadruple in the very near future, not to mention the farm property sold half a mile down the road on South Laverne on which a new subdivision will be developed. It must also be duly noted that Mr. Baker's driveway merges with Rock Springs Midland Road, right up here, at the base of a blind hill directly to the east. The safety issue this proposal creates would be best characterized by the old adage, "An accident waiting to happen." Only I and all of the homeowners I've spoken with, several which are here tonight, would term it "Another death waiting to happen." I don't say this lightly. I was outside, I was there when Hannah Davenport was run over. It's a quarter of a mile from that driveway, heading west, past our property, about a quarter of a mile at the bend, the first hairpin turn on Rock Springs Midland Road, right at North Laverne. I was there that night, it's about ten fifteen. I'll never forget the blood curdling yell. We lost a beautiful young fourteen-year-old Blackman High School student that night. She was run over from behind and killed this past April because of the aforementioned inadequacies of this old road, no shoulders to walk on and no lighting. The young mother driving the vehicle that hit Hannah and her friend Hannah Costello had a toddler, an elementary-aged child in the backseat of the vehicle. She stated she could not see the girls prior to hitting them. There are no streetlights on this road. As I spoke...
A little break here, just a minute. Have you got much more? I'm out, we let someone else speak, and you can come back if you wish.
That's, that's primarily about it. I was gonna also mention the fact, the very morning, the lady that spoke must not have been down the road towards our direction. My mailbox was taken out Tuesday night. Mr. Baker's mailbox has been taken out. Our neighbor on the other side's mailbox has been taken out, all in the past few months.
That, that's a pretty common occurrence. My road has too.
Pardon?
That's a pretty common occurrence. My road has too. Mailbox is being taken out.
Yeah, exactly. But the point I wanted to make is the morning I spoke with Elizabeth as well on the twenty-eighth of October, there was an accident in the curve at, right down from where Hannah was killed. And it's just this side of those drives there. A truck had run through the fence and hit a tree there. Paramedics were there as I was leaving for a business meeting. As I mentioned, I've been there the whole time. I have photos of what all has been occurring there. If anyone would like to ask a question, I'm sure I could answer for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. If you wish to come back, you can. Does anyone else wish to speak? Come forward, please.
My name is Bob Sidens. I live at, my wife spoke earlier. I live at five-nine-seven Rock Springs Midland Road, just across the road from Mr. Baker. We've been there since ninety-nine. You did say three minutes is what we were supposed to.
Oh.
Okay, I'll try to be more concise than the previous speaker. Neighbors is what we are. I just found out about this, this evening, when my wife was talking with Mr. Baker. Well, excuse me. A neighbor next door to me advised that there was some zoning concern regarding Mr. Baker. But I have heard Mr. Baker being accused of being a cheater, trying in some way to escape the zoning regulations of this county. And Mr. Baker is not a cheater. Mr. Baker was, as I understand it, just as I have been surprised by this, the complaints that are going around. I live, again, very close to this area. I mean, not next door to where the trucks are parked. I didn't even know that the trucks are being parked. And again, we've been here since nineteen ninety-nine. And Mr. Baker has been just an outstanding neighbor to us. He's quiet, he's reserved. I've never heard him swear in my life, that's not to say he doesn't. But I just, I'm amazed at the insidiousness of this thing, the, these, these people, this, this gentleman who just spoke. Apparently, we live on the same side of the road, and I, I've never met the man, but I live there. I hear the gunfire. I hear the firecrackers. I hear the sirens. I hear all of those things. I don't hear the trailers. And I am a light sleeper. And I, again, I don't live a few feet away from it or, or a hundred yards, but I, I'd certainly live a few hundred yards away. But I wanna get back to Mr. Baker's character. You know, we're, we're neighbors in a neighborhood of rural community where if we have a complaint about someone being loud or offensive, then we have the courage and the respect of that person, a neighbor, to say, "Hey, neighbor, you're disturbing my child, you're, you know..." And again, I've never heard of anything like this. This, I mean, for somebody to just be, Mr. Baker saying, "Oh, you have a zoning problem being called." You have, for three and a half years, he's been operating this situation where he's parking that, as I understand it. Why hadn't somebody come to him and said something before? Again, I say, behind the scene, these people have gotten together and said, "Hey, instead of being neighborly and saying, 'Neighbor, you've been here as long as I have, if not longer,'" and I think Mr. Baker's lived in that area since nineteen ninety-four or five, before I moved in ninety-nine, and has been a trucker, as I understand it, as a neighbor for most all of his life, or for thirty years plus of his life. So, I, I just hope, and, and you, we pray, we opened this meeting with you all, and I'm so happy to, to see that you all, yeah, pray to our Lord and to God, Christ. I think that's wonderful. Open this meeting. And I would just hope and pray, as, as Lord directed it, for us to be good neighbors, to love our neighbors and respect our neighbors, that we could respect this man trying to conduct a business and say, "Hey, modify, neighbor, in some way to, you know, be compatible and congenial with this gentleman who's complaining about ratchet wrenches going off at two o'clock in the morning." I am awakened by parties that flare up in this neighborhood around that corner. The death of the child has nothing to do with Mr. Baker. He was not at fault for that. He's not at fault for the size of the road that's there, on which he's been traveling since nineteen ninety-four. You know, you've made some improvements to the road, we appreciate that. But my gracious sakes alive, there's got to be some common sense, some good... I mean, I, I pray that you all will open your hearts and your understanding to someone who's just a neighbor, and he's been doing this for a long, long time. And it's like three and a half years, and nobody's complained to him about it. And then all of a sudden, here we are in a zoning meeting. I'm out mowing my pasture, and Janet said, "Hey, I just talked to Mr. Baker. You know, why don't we go to a zoning meeting tonight?" Bingo, here we are, just to say, he's a man of good character. If, if, if there's a problem with me, he'll let me know about it. Not like some of our neighbors, apparently. And, and I'm that man's neighbor.
No, no, no.
Well, I know you don't appreciate it, sir, excuse me, but...
Hold on, no, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
I can understand someone not appreciating someone who says something badly about him, okay? And I just did about the man who spoke. But again, it's out of respect for Mr. Baker and my other neighbors, including the man who just spoke. I have a problem with the man who just spoke. I would bring it to his attention as a neighbor. I mean, what's right and wrong, I'm sorry. I'm going on, but anyway, too much. Three minutes is long overdue. But please, try to meet a man's business that's, that's not, again, he just operates trucks. Try, try to work with him for at least a while till arrangements can be made to quiet the wrenches or to have certain... I don't know. Anyway, he's a good man, and I'm proud to be Mr. Baker's neighbor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, we've had, we've had quite a bit of comments on both sides, and a lot of points have been brought up. We're gonna let other people speak, but we are gonna hold it at three minutes, okay? We're gonna hold, this lady's come up first. We're gonna hold it at three minutes. We don't have a sand dial right here, but I'll tell you when three minutes...
I've lived out on Rock Springs Road since nineteen ninety-six. My name's Jamie Clark, and I am a real estate broker. Now, once your land out there, we are all residential and farming. Once this land is turned into commercial or industrial property, it stays that way. So, I know Mr. Baker wants to use it now. I mean, he said forever how long he wanted to use it for, which is fine. But who's to say five, six, ten years from now, that property is sold to somebody else? It could be used for anything as far as commercial or industrial. We are all around there. Like I said, we are all farming communities and subdivisions. There are very few businesses around that are home-based businesses. There are no other commercial businesses are out there. If there are, then they need to be rezoned also. When we came by today, on the way in here, there were three, I believe there were three tractor-trailers in there. Our road, Rock Springs Road, is not suitable for this. Like you said, the, the hill that they had on there just a little while ago, that is a terrible, terrible place. If he lives just across the road there, and you've used that, your driveway to pull in and out of there for several years, how did it get dangerous to pull in and out? If this is directly across the street, how is that not dangerous? That's what I don't understand. It's, they're directly across the road from each other. So, if it's dangerous to pull into his driveway, it'd be just as dangerous to pull in and out of there. So, that, all my main concern was, is our property, the prices of our property going down, the traffic in the area. Other than that, I don't have a problem. I don't really hear the noise, but I am a little further on down the road, and I can only imagine what Mr. Smith does here, 'cause he is right next door. But that's all I have to say. And like I said, I'm not against Mr. Baker at all. I'm sure he's a nice guy. I just, like I said, that's, my concern is the traffic on the road. It is a dangerous road. And like I said, as far as being rezoned into a commercial or industrial area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chairman, I think, yeah.
Jeff Jones. I live on North LaBourne Estates back here. It's a little bit past that, that road on the right there. I'm just really worried basically for my children. You know, I've got three young children, a lot of children in Lewis Downs. Gonna start driving soon, tractor-traders, children. Really don't... children, really don't, they don't go together. I'm not here to attack anybody's character, I'm sure they're both, all of them are pretty good people when it comes down to it, but basically, the road's not ready. I imagine, most of us from there, I imagine somebody's gonna see a deer in that road on their way home. I know I probably will, I do most nights. You know, deer's out in the middle of the road, tractor-trailer pops over that blind hill, my wife's coming up there with my three kids, you know, where am I? I'm in jail because, you know, something, something's gotta happen. I, you know, I just, it's not a place for a tractor-trailer company to be running in and out of on that road there. That's basically all I've got to say, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, sir. Uh, just chairman over here, yes, sir?
I'm Terry Baker, Donald Baker's son. I am the mechanic and also one of his drivers. He's been operating now that building for three and a half years. For three and a half years, we have not had the first complaint until about six weeks ago. Six weeks ago, we've had a complaint, and then all of a sudden, he has to come in here and have his rezoned commercial. And then y'all come in, they put the zoning sign up, everybody's jumped on the bandwagon trying to accuse us of things that we haven't done. Yes, there is some noise over there on Saturdays. We generally don't try to start working on trucks over there until around eight, nine o'clock. Generally, by three-thirty, four o'clock, we leave, we go home. Sundays is very few, very far that we work on anything over there because the trucks are leaving out on Sundays. Yes, the trucks do come in Friday night, sometime around eleven to two o'clock in the morning, but they're generally, you know, they're generally in there, we have a rule, please be quiet, please, you know, just idle in and idle out. And everybody else complaining about Rock Springs Road out there, we're not the only commercial vehicles traveling that road. There's dump trucks that travel that road, there's concrete trucks that travel that road. Matter of fact, the concrete trucks and the dump trucks that travel that road built Lewis Downs over there. There's farmers that, you know, pull their, their, uh, salvage, things like that. We're not the only trucking company that travels this road. And, you know, for us being a trucking company, we're not running a business out of there. All we're using that for is parking and maintenance. The business side of this is run out of Reddville, Tennessee, out of Jordan and Jordan, is who we have our trucks leased to. All we're using that for is parking and maintenance on Saturdays, and that's all we're using it for. And I, I did not think we had this many people that had a problem with us being there, considering, like I said, we, it started out with one complaint, now it's turned into a hundred. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Brooke Hughes, and I live in Lewis Downs. And Rock Springs is no place for any more than the dump trucks and the concrete trucks. Whoever even zoned that outage for the first entrance for Lewis Downs to turn out of there going back to town is very dangerous. So if you've got a tractor-truck coming out of there also, it's a, it's a nightmare waiting to happen. And there is more children that live in Lewis Downs than there is adults. The ratio is higher. So to have a trucking company across the street, I would not want to see that property as commercial. I think it's fine if he's running the business out of there, but to be running, you know, if he has to do his business out of there with paperwork, but there's, I, we, I mean, the lady just there was, I, I wasn't here for the cussing part of it, but I've heard about it, and just sitting here, she was cursing by my daughter. So, um, it, those roads are made for tractors, it's zoned for farming, it's not zoned commercial. I'm here to represent Lewis Downs because we are-
Thank you. And what else? Thank you.
My name is Belinda Smith. My husband, Richard, and our nine-year-old son, Jacob, along with our eleven-year-old daughter, Taylor, have lived at the property at issue years prior to Mr. Baker purchasing the property at auction. Fourteen years ago, when my husband and I moved from Nashville to eight-twenty-three Rock Springs Midland Road in Christiana, we did so to live in a quiet and safe environment in which to start and raise a family. Since then, other families have built their homes all around us, seeking the same quiet, peaceful lifestyle. Our old two-lane road has become very heavily traveled with the majority of the vehicles carrying school-aged children. Numerous school buses travel up and down Rock Springs Road every day during the week, picking up and dropping off children on a road with no shoulders, sidewalks, or lighting. In addition, there is that blind hill at the eastmost entrance to Lewis Downs and Mr. Baker's Trucking Depot driveway. If you allow his property to be rezoned smack in the middle of our residential community, it will be just a matter of time before there will be more fatalities on Rock Springs Midland Road. Furthermore, that quiet environment no longer exists at our home. We are awakened during the night by the sounds of eighteen-wheelers going into and from Baker's property as it rattles our whole house, and we live in a brick house, it rattles the whole house. As Baker has increased activity, our children are constantly complaining about being woken at all hours of the night. They also can no longer play in their own backyard due to the obscene cursing and the bile language coming from the truckers next door. Needless to say, we do not use that language, nor do we permit it in the presence of our children. Are you going to allow one person's selfish motives to destroy our family-oriented community's safety, property values, and serenity? Mr. Baker was violating zoning laws of his own free volition. That's his problem, not this community's problem. Do the right thing for the well-being and futures of dozens upon dozens of homeowners and residents in this area, especially the safety of our children, and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm just, my name is Jennifer Diverse, I live off of Gray Fox Drive, and I just want to state that the hours of the trucks that come in and out are not just at night. There was one example, I was coming home from school, picking my child up, I come over to Blind Hill, and there's a tractor-trailer turning into Mr. Baker's property. If I was the school bus, or I was, you know, I was a bigger vehicle, I wouldn't have been able to stop in time. Because coming over that hill, I didn't even see him until I was almost on top of him. That's all I wanted to say, just example that it's not just in the middle of the night, it's throughout the day.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Then what else wish to speak? Then what else wish to speak, before we close the public hearing? What else wish to speak? Oh, one? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Back to the commission, yes, sir, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, um, I want to commend Mr. Baker in working hard and making it in this tough economy, but there's a few things that you've, you've got to do. When you buy a piece of property, you've got to make sure it's zoned for what you're wanting to do. And it's, uh, it's definitely residential. Uh, this whole area is out there is residential and farmland, so I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the request based upon the road safety, noise, I've been making a few notes as we've been going along. It's commercial business in the residential zone, it's not within the land use policies, there's not a fire hydrant nearby. A matter of fact, I don't think the barn was permitted, nor is it meeting the, uh, side property line setbacks, and, uh, gravel parking area couldn't do that in a commercial area or a light industrial zone, so that's the reasons I'm making a motion to deny.
To deny, do I have a second? Would you call roll, please, ma'am? Yes, sir.
There are some time limits that we would give Mr. Baker to relocate that business? Would, would he have to be out tomorrow, or?
Well, generally, uh, of course, this is, uh, the first step in, in the process. Uh, you mean, you are recommending body for rezonings to the Board of Commissioners, uh, so he could still move his application forward to the Board of Commissioners, uh, for a final vote. Uh, if it's denied subsequently at that meeting, if he decides to continue moving it forward, then our codes department and zoning enforcement officers, along with planning staff, would kind of get together and, and, and talk with the applicant as far as a reasonable timeframe for him to, to vacate the property. It wouldn't just be, and I would confer with Mr. Jones on this, it probably wouldn't be like the day after, we'd, we'd give him a reasonable amount of time to, to vacate.
But this would be going, um, well, if it goes, it's, it's going to next-
It'd be in December.
If it were to not pass here, next month is going to full commissioners, that's thirty days right there, so-
That's correct.
If it does carry on to there, and, uh, if he wants to pursue it, uh, that's thirty days to kind of be thinking that it's probably not a good situation that he's in, and then if it fails there, then, you know, he's got to be moving on, so maybe an additional thirty days there, so you're talking about January.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, we would, uh, I don't think it'd be appropriate, especially in a denial situation, to put some kind of a time limit on, say, you have this amount of days to get through, we would just, as staff, work with the applicant, uh, again, to come up with a reasonable timeframe, and that's the normal practice for something like that. I think you're correct, I think that's right, yes, sir? The, the quick answer to the question is yes, he would have a, a certain amount of time to vacate the property, yes, sir?
All right.
I, I would also assume that, uh, he would be prohibited to take these trucks and move them four hundred yards down to his site where he lives and park them there, which is also-
Well, yeah, and that's-
Which is also an R-15.
That is correct. Now, there is the possibility, if he were to ask for a major home-based business, that he may be able to have a couple of vehicles there, but not the amount that he has now, and that would have to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval for that.
Will?
I, I'd just like to point out that if we were to approve this, we'd basically be creating a commercial node right there on Rock Springs Road, and we would have no grounds to turn down any other tract of land down that road for pretty much any industrial commercial zone. Uh, this would, if, if, if we were to improve it, then you could have a concrete plant come up, want to go next door, and we wouldn't have the grounds to even turn it down, because we've already said, and this flies in the face of our, everything in our zoning ordinance, current or new zoning ordinance, so I hate to not allow people to have property rights, but they're just, no way we would even consider to allow a trucking company to be, to be allowed right there, you know, if, if it was an application before it ever started the business, so I, I hate to disrupt a, a small family business, but this is way past the boundaries, in my opinion.
Well, we've approved, you know, home-based businesses before, and then they get to a point where it's not really a home-based business running out of the garage anymore, it's full-fledged, uh, commercial, or, you know, in this case, light industrial or industrial use. So, then they've got to go. I mean, residential is residential, and no way, form or fashion, is this situation residential, and so, uh-
And, and I'll, and I'll say this, um, you know, the, the applicant did come meet with us, uh, before making his application, uh, you know, we explained the situation to him, we even explained then that we didn't feel that this was a very appropriate application for the area. I don't really believe that, uh, he did this on purpose, I mean, just from talking to him at the meeting-
Oh, I don't think so, yeah.
Right, and I'm, I'm just saying that, just from my own, you know, my, my own take on the situation, I don't think, and I, I don't think you thought that either, but-
Well, this isn't on Mr. Baker's character, or his family, or anything like that, like I said, I commend him in, in a, in a good business that he's running, but it is a business, and it's a, it's, it's not a residential business.
Right, and-
It's, it's a residential zone, so, you know, this is where he's gonna have to find a light industrial or commercial location to, to do this type work, and, and evidently, he's doing a great job, and he's expanding, and he's got a lot of trucks that he's owning and doing a good job, but it's, it's just not the location in a residential area to be doing this.
Right, and, and our staff report pretty much echoes that sentiment.
Rhonda.
Doug, so when he offered to move on site, or like they suggested, um, possibly move this business to his site, and it be a home-based business, he would still be out of compliance, basically, there's-
Currently, he would be. If he took all those trucks and moved them to where he lives, that would be out of compliance even with our major home-based business standards, we wouldn't allow him to have that many vehicles.
The current standards, or the future standards, or-
Our current standards, which really are our future standards as well, because that part of the new ordinance really didn't change much between the two, so.
Dennis.
It's just the situation we've talked about so much for the past two and a half years with our comprehensive plan, that we're trying to, to work towards, to, uh, to use here in Rutherford County. It's the slippery slope where, um, I'm sure Mr. Baker started off with just a few trucks there, just thinking to do the small business, and, uh, he's been a victim of his success as, as well as, as what we've seen there. And it's just like, as Will said here, uh, it, it can only just magnify, uh, in that area out there, and I think this is something that we've gotten into, uh, and I think it's been brought up by individuals here, that there are other, probably other businesses like that, and that's true, that's true, but, uh, we have to deal with what we have seen here and what our staff has seen, and, and there's just no way to correct that problem.
Okay, anyone else comments before we have the vote? Call roll, please, ma'am. This is a motion to deny.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Veronica Buchanan?
No.
Will Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Kush? Jeff Phillips? Edith Reed?
Yes.
Steve Sandlin?
Hi.
Vincent Windrow?
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
Yes. Okay, it, it is denied. His next step is December fifteenth-
Yes, sir, that, that-
County Commission meeting in this room.
Yes, sir.
December, December fifteenth. All right? Okay, bylaws and procedures, you want?
Uh, just a, just a couple of comments on that, about that, uh, about a week and a half, uh, about a week and a half ago now, uh, we had a training session with Mr. Sam Edwards from the Greater Nashville Regional Council, he came and did a, a training session for our Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, during that time, some of the discussion centered around, uh, the, the public comment that we receive at public hearings, specifically timeframes and, and those type of issues, and, uh, the issue was, was brought up about, you know, the fact that we don't necessarily have anything specifically written in our bylaws regarding that. Uh, we've provided you with some information from the City of Murfreesboro on your table, uh, what they use as part of their public meeting process, or public hearing process, uh, what they affectionately call their mind-your-manners propaganda, uh, they've referred to that that way for quite a while, I kind of like it. But, uh, that's something that, uh, Mr. Lynch had asked us to put on, uh, the agenda for discussion. Uh, we've put that on your tables today, uh, we just asked that you take a look at it, kind of review it, see if that's something you'd like to adopt for our bylaws as well, and we can discuss this in, in more detail at the day meeting, which would be two weeks from today, which would be the twenty-eighth, Monday, right after Thanksgiving. So, unless there's any questions, that's pretty much the comments I have on that.
We, i- if we, we'd need to adopt something, and, and Sam Edwards says we need it in our bylaws, that we do control length of time, and, and if we do let someone speak further, we have to, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules so that, that we can do that, so read this over, and we really need to discuss this at our next meeting, and we come up with something that's fair to everyone.
Uh, there's no other questions on that, uh, I'll go on to the next item, which is our, the new draft zoning resolution and map. Uh, you should all have a copy of the new zoning resolution, it's got a nice, pretty purple cover on it now. The, I will say that, uh, we printed enough copies for, for everyone, so if you didn't get one, let me know, and it's also located on our website as well. Uh, you'll notice, uh, most of you should have what we would call a clean copy of it. Uh, if you look on the front cover in the lower right-hand corner, some of you may see a, a small X in the corner. Uh, what had happened was, there was a formatting glitch with the, uh, computer program we were using that we did not catch until after we had printed about seven- using that we did not catch, until after we had printed about seven or eight, or at least that many copies of the ordinance. The text is, everything is the same, but you'll notice that there's some formatting irregularities with it. It may make it a little interesting to read, to say the least, but the text that's there is accurate, so there's nothing wrong with that. So, but if you have an issue reading it, let, let me know, and we'll, we'll replace. We just didn't want to, basically, we just didn't want to kill any more trees and print any more of the, of the items out, because of the length of the document. But if, if you do need a copy, please let me know. We have made a number of changes to that based on the comments we've received, as well as the two work sessions we had on this. I'm just gonna go over them very briefly, and we can go into a little more detail of this in our day meeting. The first item is, there's a section there now, and for conservation subdivisions. We're going to propose to allow them right now in just the RL zone, which is the one unit per acre zone. There would be a 50% minimum open space requirement, there's calculations there for determining what the usable area is, determining the density, and it would be a voluntary situation. You could either develop as a conventional subdivision, or you could choose to develop as a conservation subdivision. I believe that's in Chapter 11. Yeah, it's in the Chapter 11 of the, the document, you can take a look at that. Further, in Chapter 11, they've added a section of standards applicable for certain uses in all districts, that irregardless of whether it's a use by right, or if it's a permitted use by special exception only. There are certain things like recycling centers, farm, wineries, those kind of things. We've added some specific standards for those particular uses, regardless of the zones they're in. The mobile home standards that were originally in Chapter 11, removed to Chapter 4, nothing has really changed with them, it just made more sense, since they're a residential zone, to have them in that particular district. We also had some discussions about detached accessory structures, about the current limitations that we have for those. You, you recall that our current regulations are one acre or less, you're allowed 1,200 square feet of detached space. One to five acres, basically, you're allowed 1,800 square foot, and five acres or greater, you can have up to 2,500 square foot. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission that those standards that we have now maybe are a little low, and that somebody that has, you know, 50, 100 acres out there, you're only limiting them to 2,500 square feet, excluding agricultural structures may be a little on the low side. So what we've done at this point is replace that. The new standards that we're proposing at this point is, up to an acre of land, you're allowed 2,000 square feet, and in anything above one acre, you're allowed 5% of your total lot area. So that, that still can get kind of high, as you get up there, if someone has a, you know, 100 acres or something like that, that would allow about five acres of, of covered space, but that, it's kind of more of a sliding scale at that point, and it's not just using lot coverage, and that was a discussion we had, where if you had a 20% lot coverage, somebody has 100 acres, you can have 20 acres under roof with detached structure. So it does place more of a limitation on it, but does open it up some. That's open for discussion, that's just so you understand that that's something that we did propose. For Chapter 14, we reduced the standards for special exceptions quite a bit, and really the only thing we did there, if it was a situation where the, if the standard was something that would already be required by the ordinance, we just took it out. For example, there was a number of times where you would see in there, where one of the standards would be, has to meet all site plan requirements in chapter, whatever chapter it's in, or something to that effect, has to meet all the landscaping requirements, whatnot. Those are things that are gonna have to be done anyway, so we didn't see the need to take up more space within the document to have that, so it'll be shorter, but that's only really the things we took out. And also, based on information we received with, from our consultant, we have removed the standards for confined animal feeding operations. It's his opinion, and based on the information he's provided us, that it probably qualifies as an agriculture to use according to state law, and we couldn't regulate it anyway. So at this point, that has been removed from the document. We've made several smaller changes as well, again, we can go into more detail with that at the next meeting, but those kind of an outline of the larger changes that we made. In addition, you'll see a copy of the map, but we kind of have it sitting up front here. That's also been amended. Both of the revised document, the ordinance itself, and also the map are both on our website right now. We uploaded them a little earlier today. So if anybody happens to be watching at home, wants to take a look at that, then go to our website at www.rutherfordcountytn.gov, navigate to the, well, actually, there's a link to the, the zoning and subdivision regulation update, which links our homepage right there on the county's homepage, and then you can find the documents right there. So I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding that. Again, we can go into more detail about that at the, the daytime meeting.
Okay.
Just a couple other, just a brief items. December 12th will be our evening meeting in December. Last several years, it's been kind of a tradition where we have our holiday lunch, if you, or dinner, if you will, kind of between Christmas and, and New Year's, I'm sorry, Christmas and Thanksgiving, kind of have it right in there. Typically, that's what we do. We'd like to do that again this year, we would just meet over in our, in our office at 5:00 for the, the dinner, and then we would just come over here after that. So typically, it's a potluck. We will provide the, the meat, Del and I usually provide the meat and everything, so we just ask you to provide some side dishes, and we're gonna have Ms. Johnson-nays to keep up a list. If you have an idea of some scrumptious food to bring along with you, that would be, that'd be good. So just let Gail know, and she'll go ahead and mark you down for that. Also, just a reminder that there is only gonna be that one Planning Commission meeting in December. You recall in the past that the, the meeting, the second meeting of the month, which is always the fourth Monday, falls right between Christmas and New Year's. Nobody really wants to have a meeting at that time, so we've, last few years, we've canceled that meeting, and this year, we didn't even schedule it. So we will just have the one meeting in December, so we'll look at Platts plans, site plans, and any rezoning applications that we may have. Finally, just, just a quick, again, we had our training a week and a half or so ago. A majority of you have the hours you need now, there are still about five of you, I believe, that still need a few hours. So if you have any questions about what you might need, I've got the log here, and I'd be more than happy to, to help you with that, and plus, let you know all the different training opportunities that we have, the different material that we have for things you can take home, things you can look at online, there, there's several options. You need four hours training, according to Public Chapter 862. So with that, I think I've worn out my welcome, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman. You used your three minutes. Yes, sir.
Got a couple withdrawn tonight. Are they in the process of coming back with, they need extra, they need more information, more work, or, or are they gone?
The, the zoning application on Baker Road, I believe, is gone. I don't think that's coming back. The, the site plan for the Dollar General, further down Last Cassius Pike and Lofton Road, the email we received from their design engineer was that they were still working through a few issues, and that they would get back with us, so I would anticipate that coming back, but I don't have a timeframe at this point as to when.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Todd, glad to have you here.
Mr. Chairman, on that last Donald Baker, Donald Baker, I want to change my vote to yes, please.
I don't know if you're able to at this point. It, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the outcome anyway, because it was, you were the only dissenting votes.
All right. Any other questions?
The continuing educations, they have to be done by January 1.
By December, well, December, yes, but December 31st would be the last day you could do anything, so by the end of the year. Yes, sir.
Jeff.
Yes, he can. It, it, it's over at that point. I mean, at that point, we would meet with him as, as, you know, our zoning enforcement and our codes officials and planning, we would set up a timetable for him to vacate the property in that manner, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Have a motion. Do I have a second? You get a second. All right. Don't put that motion, say aye.
He's lost the ball. He's...